Start absolutely on time and now I see I'm three minutes late. Doggone it. Good evening, everyone. Happy to see so many people come out on this icy, cold, freezing February evening. But welcome, we'd love to have you come and share with us and listen to us. So, let's get on with the meeting. I'd like to have us all participate in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Stacy, would you please call the roll?
William Baumgart.
Here.
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 Here. Has the meeting been posted, Stacy?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. All right, we do not have any red lights tonight. And we don't have any recognitions tonight, but we certainly have a lot of teachers in our district that deserve recognition, I know that for sure. Do we have, yes, we do, we have students from South High School. Good evening, welcome. It's your turn, so please come up to the podium and give us your report. We're anxious to hear what's going on.
Oh, good evening, everyone.
I'm Ricardo.
My name is Anion, and we're from South. So, we're gonna talk briefly on some student events going on in the school, some community projects that we're working on, and academic focus, too.
And also, since last time we were here in the fall, I guess we spoke for like eighteen minutes. This time I brought a
We're gonna stay on test.
Yeah, we'll try and stay on test as much as we can. Okay, so, let's get started.
So, first off, this weekend, we're actually premiering our fall, our winter show, Stand and Deliver for our drama program. Stand and Deliver is roughly based on a true story. It was made from a movie in the eighties, so I'm in it. It's actually a really good show, I'm student directing it, too. So, I recommend you come out and see it. It's thirteenth, fourteenth, and fifteenth this weekend, about seven PM. And that's one of our, it's our middle show, our next show we have in the spring. So, this one is kind of one that a lot of students are involved in, and we look forward to giving it. Today, we give a matinee to the school, and the students reacted well to it, and they seem to like it a lot. So, we're doing pretty well in drama right now.
Also, for FBLA, last weekend, we had FBLA regionals. And I personally am in FBLA, so we had nine people competing from South, and seven out of those nine people actually made it to state. I personally made it in Emerging Business Issues. And we also had finalists in accounting, economics, entrepreneurship, and computer applications. So, seven out of nine people, like the seven that competed, I say that that's pretty good, and it's something that I was proud of.
Also, on the note of success, our debate team recently went to state in January. And we took first, second, and third at the varsity level, as well as second and third at the novice level, as well as speaker points all around, with speaker awards at varsity, both affirmative and negative for both sides, and also on this novice. With that, we also won top affirmative team and negative team in the state. So, that means that half of the team that argues the affirmative, they were the best rated across the entire state in all the teams. So, it was big, exciting for our debate team. We've grown the largest this year to forty-four members across the school, ranging from freshman to senior. So, it was really exciting, I'm on the debate team, and I actually was privileged enough to take first in varsity, as well as top half. So, looking back at the four years, I'd say debate was one of the best activities that I've gotten involved with, and it was really a lot of fun. And I hope to see that first place again in varsity and novice and all the rest of them next year. So, that was really exciting, though.
And then, a little bit about the South Athletics that have been going on. As most of you know, South, the girls' swim team did very good this year, won state. And also, out of that, came a national record for one of their relays. So, just the fastest out of the whole country, so that was really proud and just something that's proud for our school, and we were able to have.
One of the community projects that we're currently working on right now through the Avid program is called Teens for Jeans, and that's an organization put together by the Avid students, where they're asking for students to bring in gently-used jeans and donate them in their English classes or during AO in the morning. And what happens with that is, once you donate, you're given a twenty-five percent twenty-five percent off coupon to Aeropostale for a new pair of jeans for yourself. And so, our South goal is to collect five hundred pairs of jeans. And if South does that, then we're able to be put in the runnings for a chance to win five thousand dollars.
Wow.
So, the Avid students have been really heading that up. There's posters all over the schools, there's announcements constantly, there are kids coming into classes saying, "Hey, bring in your jeans." And so, that's one of the exciting programs that I think really sticks out for the community, too, because these are taking an active role with the community, as well as in our school.
Yeah, and to talk a little bit about just academic focus, just like from data from South, we've been noticing that just like South has been able to grow kids 1.5 years in the course of one year, just by like ACT results. So, if you take, like, just think about it, think about like two years, you're actually growing three years in the course of two years. So, that's something that's also been great for us.
So, we've kind of come to an end. And this time, we're not at eighteen minutes, we're about four minutes right now. So, thank you for having us, we're very excited to be here tonight. We're glad that we were able to come sit here.
And we're equally excited to have you. It's just one of the highlights of our meetings, when students come and perform and give reports. We love it. Anyone have any questions, Mr. Baumgart?
What's the debate topic this year?
This last year?
Yeah, we're just finishing, yeah.
Yeah, we did economic engagement toward the following countries, which was Cuba, Mexico, or Venezuela. And I argued affirmatively, and my plan was to provide internet access to Cubans in order to solve for a number of harms and disadvantages.
Thank you.
Mr. Como.
Thank you, Ms. Brusink. Was this, this was your fourth, did you participate all four years on debate? Was this the largest?
Yes, it had, my freshman year, we had eight students involved, and now we have forty-four. And it's just gonna grow even more next year.
Why, why do you think it grew the way it did?
I think, well, my freshman year, we did not do very well at state. We didn't qualify for the novice state tournament, but I pulled out with a speaker award then. But I think that as our sophomore year, we kind of increased our skills, we practiced more often, tried to find more things to work on, and as we gained more awards, people were interested. Okay, what is debate, like, what are they doing here? The students started to come, and they got involved. And I think, once like you see other students getting involved with that and seeing success, I think a lot of people catching on to it and wanted to be involved.
Nice, nice, so you set an example as throughout the years, and that's a nice thing to have as you're leaving as a senior, going on to doing bigger and better things, so that you should be, you should be proud of that. I don't know if I truly understood what you meant by, we had students growing at like a one-and-a-half-year pace as compared to a one-year pace. How, and measured via the ACT score, can you explain to me how that was determined?
Well, me and Mr. Joint were talking, and I think what he meant
That explains it.
Well, yeah, I think what he meant is just that, in like the course of one year, just students like, just academically, with grades and just the stuff they're able to learn, they learn it like at what other schools like would learn it in one-and-a-half years, and
They're learning in one year.
Compared, compared to schools in the state, or nationally? Oh, okay.
Nationally, yeah.
Okay. That's impressive, very impressive. I'm glad that you shared that statistic with us tonight.
Thank you.
What, thank you, Joe. What classes do you offer that takes three semesters? And that you can, you know, do it in two, do it in a year? Do you know?
I do not know.
Well, I'm not really sure if we have three semesters. Please help us.
The average rate of growth on an ACT is two points every year.
Oh.
South, on average, has grown their students three points every year.
Okay.
Is what that is based on. So, it's not students taking three semesters worth of coursework. It's actually, we're training them and helping them learn at a rate of one-and-a-half years for one year.
That's great.
Good job, man.
Thank you.
We won't, we won't count Mr. Joint's time there.
Are you taking used jeans from people outside of South High School? Like, people in the community?
I don't think that we've set up like any like community spots where they can donate jeans, but I know that at academic, or at sports events, like the basketball games, they have setting out boxes and having people, like parents, tell their parents to bring them with them. So, at times when the community comes to South, I know that they are collecting, but I'm not sure if it's like out about in the community.
So, if I'd come to your school for an event, I could bring my old jeans?
Oh, yes, definitely.
That's what I meant. Oh, good. Dr. Langel.
Thanks so much, you guys did a great job. Two things, I think that South needs more recognition for all the great things that happen there. And I would like to see something in the paper about this phenomenal
Well, I did fail to mention this, but Teens for Jeans was mentioned in the Freeman today.
But what about the debate achievements? That's just phenomenal.
That was in the Freeman, too.
I missed it, that was in there, okay, maybe it was a tinier article that I would have liked, okay. And I did debate in high school, and I think that you probably can attest to this, as well as all forty-four of your compatriots, that it is the best training to organize your thoughts, to marshal evidence, to do everything. So, I mean, I hope the program will continue to grow. I mean, that's just terrific. Great success, congratulations.
Thank you.
Yep.
I agree with Dr. Langel. I love to, I love to go to South every year, every year since I've been on the board. I, I participate in your graduation, and I'm very proud of everything you do. And like Dr. Langel said, you do so many wonderful things. You need to, you need to brag about it. Because then everyone in the community knows about it, so just brag about it. Okay, anyone else like to add anything? Okay.
I already razzed him for wearing blue. When I come in, I look at the colors, and then I say, "Oh, I know where you're from." But I thought they were from West, and look at their supervisors. The black shirts today are, are dressed
They're black on
They're black shirts?
Yes, yes, they do.
Just needed a red tie.
Yeah, Valentine's Day, too.
You have to keep them clean for Valentine's Day.
Yeah, for sure.
Well, boys, there's, there's some, there was someone in the audience who was smiling ear to ear, and you could just see the great pride on this gentleman's face. Do you think I know who I'm talking about?
Is that Mr. Joint?
Yeah, your principal. We thank him for all the wonderful things that he's doing as your leader. Thank you. Well, thank you for being here this evening, and enjoy what's left of the school year.
Thank you so much.
It's gonna go real fast, because that's the way life is.
Also, before we go,
Yes.
we were told to say that that the best principal in the world is Mr. Joint. So, we just wanted to let you guys know that.
It's measured by some very strange scale, I would say.
The Joint scale.
Pardon?
Did you learn that in a year, or a year and a half?
So, you, so you're gonna get a free lunch out of that?
I, I hope so.
Let us know.
I will, I will.
If you follow through, will you? Let us know.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. What a, what a fun, fun group of kids. All right, next on our agenda, and before we move on to the next item on our agenda, I just want to call attention to Stacy Cosmert, who's our secretary tonight. Sue Eddinger is out of town in a very lovely place, I think it's called Hawaii.
Yes, it is.
So, she's filling in for Ms. Eddinger. So, thank you, Sue, thank you for getting everything ready for tonight itself.
Thank you.
Okay. We're now at the section of our meeting where there is an opportunity for citizens to speak. And as has been past practice, each individual will be limited to two to three minutes time in order for us to hear from our community, and then get on with the agenda of our meeting. I will have Mr. Como signal the speaker at two-and-a-half minutes in order to allow a wrap-up of their comments. We expect the audience will be respectful of the speaker and of the Board of Education, and refrain from responding with verbal comments, cheering, applause, or other behavior that will detract from the meeting. Also, in order to respect our speakers and meeting participants, please silence your cellphones. And our very first speaker tonight will be, nobody signed up, huh?
Nope.
Is there anybody in the audience that would like to come forward? You don't have to sign up, you can, you can still come forward. Okay. Good evening, Paul.
Good evening, my name's Paul Reese, Eight Forty-One Genesee Street. I'd just like to touch on a couple more things that I talked about last month, and about the raise that you guys gave yourself. And not the raise, but the addition to the raise that wouldn't, that the public wasn't allowed to comment about. So, that's why I wanted to stand up. I wanted to talk briefly about Ms. Madden, you weren't here last month. And there is nobody in this room that I think understands Robert's Rules of Orders better than you, and the spirit in which they're written. And it definitely seemed that this board circumvented those, that spirit, when it decided to add to something that had gone through a process that had been accounted for, the accounting was done, how much it was gonna cost, and just decided to throw in an obscure amount of money on top of it, which was never given, the public was never given a chance to respond to or give insight to. And Dan Warren said that it was because of his taxes or your taxes all going up. I do not believe for a minute that Dan Warren had an epiphany at the head of that table, suddenly. I believe that it reeked in here that it was done beforehand. I, I just was disappointed in that. I don't, I come here to, to learn things and how things work. I come here because I want to see the character of the people who would trust my daughter. And I did not find that in high character. And I was disappointed, and I just wanted to reiterate that again. And I, I do believe that, that money should be, should be, it should be thought of again and given back, and rescinded, that vote. And if you want it, then do it through the proper channels to get it. I have no, no quorum with that, but I do believe that it should be rescinded. And thank you for your time, Ken.
Thank you, Paul. Anyone else care to address the board? Going, going, gone. Okay. All right, let's move on. Next order of business is minute approval. You have minutes in your packet for approval for the January fifteenth, twenty fourteen, meeting, regular board meeting, the twenty fourteen executive session, the January fifteenth executive session expulsion panel, February fifth, twenty fourteen, special board meeting, and February sixth executive session expulsion panel. Could we please have a motion to accept or approve the minutes?
So moved.
So moved in the second, that we, it's been moved that we accept the minutes?
That is second to Mr. McCaffrey.
Any discussion? Okay, Stacy, call the roll, please.
Joseph Como?
Aye.
William Baumgart? Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Karen Reinacek?
Aye.
Ellen Langel?
Aye.
Steve Edlund?
Aye.
Patricia Madden?
Aye.
Barbara Brusink?
Aye. Motion passes eight-zero. Communications from our
I have no communications this evening?
I knew you was.
You have nothing to tell us?
I have no, no correspondence.
Safety Committee, Mr. Baumgart.
Okay, I do have a report. Reminder that in January, the safety meeting was canceled because of the weather. That was during a real freezing period, so this is essentially two months' worth. Safety Committee met this morning, we reviewed and accepted the action reports for the students and for the staff, both the months of January and February. Other than an increased number of slipping and falling, nothing unusual to report. Deanne Landveter, our school nurse, gave us, spent some time covering with us an update on the AED and the CPR issue. All schools have now been equipped with the, excuse me, the AEDs, that's the Automatic Electric, Electronic Defibrillators. Because of this, we have, in addition to this, we have had a target of getting our first responder ratio up in our schools. That's the people that are trained to deal with an emergency that arrives, health emergency which arises in the schools. We have schools that are, have a good ratio of the number of responders to students, but other schools that need more responders. We are currently providing AED and CPR training at all of our schools in a priority list that Deanne has put together, where we need them most first. Having units also, also means that we must have a routine maintenance plan to replace both the pads and the batteries on the AEDs, because there are timed intervals where this must be done. She has also developed a plan to do this. And in addition, now that we have AEDs in all of our schools, all of our schools will be required to hold two AED drills per year, which simulate a emergency, and responders have to come and respond, respond to it. Just simply would like to report that Deanne has got all of this under control, and this is a positive development, even though there's some additional work involved in it, it's a, it's a very positive move in a safe direction. Hooping cough issue which keeps creeping up, but we're in very good shape on that. We currently only have one student involved with hooping cough, cough at this time. That school will be sanitized, and we'll watch for any further developments on that.
Was that in elementary school or middle school?
Yes, it was. No, you know what? I take that, I'm not positive.
You don't have to identify.
Yeah, and I don't think they, I don't think she did.
Okay.
And Glenn reports that though the city has moved to a salt-sand mix for the remainder of this winter, that's because there's a shortage of salt occurring. He reports that we are still able to get salt only. Say that correctly. We don't want sand on our playgrounds, we only want salt on our playgrounds, because the sand does a lot of damage to our floors. So, he is in agreement with the city to get salt only for our playground use. And that concludes my report from the Safety Committee.
Mr. Baumgart, I think that was a wonderful idea, that they're gonna have those AED drills. Just another safety program going on. Besides fire drills and other drills.
Tornado, lockdown. Pretty soon, they'll have drills every day.
You know what kind of drills they had when I was in elementary school, don't you?
Atomic bomb.
Oh, yes, I remember those, that's true.
I'm just guessing.
What, what did you say?
Oh, I thought maybe bomb, atomic bomb.
Well, sure, it was during the Second World War, and we didn't know that, you know, if we were going to be hurt or not in the United States. So, we would practice every month, all the kids we made sit upon, so we went in the basement of the school, and we had them in our neighborhood once a month, too. And everybody had to turn their lights out, and then the block warden would go around and check to make sure that you couldn't see the light. So, it's one drill that we don't have to have today, thank God. Okay.
Mr. Como.
Mr. Baumgart, do you have a charter school report?
Wait, Joe has a question.
Oh, yes, Joe, sorry.
Just, just a real quick question, Bill. Do we, do you get a report for the number of times that we've had to use or attempt to use AEDs? I mean, I'm not sure if we've used them, ever?
I don't know that, if you did not report on that, I will find out. I'll put that in next month's
And hopefully, we never have to use them, right? But
Yeah, and there are some additional issues that come up around that, and that is, you know, some of our schools are used out of hours for non-school functions, and we will post that the AEDs are there, but it's not necessary that we will have somebody there that can use them. So, that's, that's an issue we're talking about, trying to figure out what we should do about that. But I will find out whether we've ever had to use the AEDs, and I, I seem to recall that there was an instance where we did, but it's not within the last year.
Okay.
But I will follow up.
Thank you, Bill. Do you have a charter school report?
I have a charter school report, charter and magnet school report. And again, I've tried to, the only items I think are relatively immediate interest to you. So, I have three things to report on, one is the Randall STEM, had their lottery last Friday and continues to have more interest in open, than they have in openings available. Number of applications may actually have been down a little this year, but we also required new families to attend, and I think this is the important part, an open house or a see-it-live event in order to be in the lottery. Chris reports that we want to make sure that those applying to the STEM Academy know what it's about before they get their, their name in there. And I think that's a very positive move, rather than having people just walk in and think this is gonna be cool. E-Achieve, excuse me. See that call, I got it or?
You already, that was quick, that was quick.
This, this is from Rick, of course. We received over at the E-Achieve official notification that student Ivy St. John is now a national merit finalist. Congratulations to her, she has now joined a very elite group of students. She is one, she is only one of five E-Achieve students to have attained this high honor. On the other hand, five national merit finalists from a school that has just passed the one-thousandth graduate mark last year speaks very highly of what that school is doing. So, I thought that was worth a celebration.
Absolutely.
Very, and I did get Rick to get permission for using her name, and she's fine with that, so. Other than that, I would like to remind you that in your Friday board packet, you will find information about some other events and visits that are going on throughout our engineering and our health charter schools, our STEM schools, and some of you that show an impressive amount of partnering and exposure to the world about what we have going on in our schools. We have made connections with many different organizations. What's going on over there? And it's, it's very positive, we're not hiding our candle, any kind of a bushel basket on that one. So, watch for that in your Friday packet, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Baumgart, we appreciate that report. Okay, as we move along, we'll get into the consent agenda. Laurie, would you report on the gifts received? Our agenda?
I'd be happy to. We have one gift to report this evening. A total of two thousand dollars was given by Paul and Kathleen Omen and the Northwest Mutual Matching Funds to Central Middle School to purchase technology-based supplies for the math and, and science classrooms.
Wow.
Just a note on that, because both the Omens have been incredibly generous. And NML, Northwestern Mutual, has been incredibly generous.
Yes.
And I mean, I just wonder, having heard now even over the past four, five years,
That's right.
this is really mounting up to substantial gifts. So, I mean
That's thousands of dollars.
Yeah, it's phenomenal, so I mean, I'm sure we recognize them, but I just wanted to verbally mention. It's incredible.
Are you suggesting that, you know, they come to a board meeting so that we can
Why not?
Thank you, thank them?
Sure, and somebody from NML could come, too.
Okay. Todd, would you, would you remember that one?
Because they were really amazing.
Before the end of the school year, let's, let's bring those people in and thank them, because you're right, for years, and every month, it's, you know, two thousand dollars. It's wonderful, they are very generous. So, I think we should bring them in and say thank you to them in person. Okay, thank you, Laurie. Your agenda includes categories for approval. If any board member wishes to have an item set aside for separate consideration, you will have that opportunity. Included in the items for approval tonight are decisions of the expulsion panel, which met on January sixteenth, twenty fourteen, and February sixth, twenty fourteen. A confidential communication regarding the details of the expulsions was in your Friday packet, along with the minutes included under item number one G. If any board member wishes to discuss this item, we have scheduled an executive session at the close of the regular meeting. Approval of the consent agenda confirms full board agreement with the expulsion panel's action. Okay. If any board member wishes to have something set aside for separate consideration, then please indicate so at this time. Okay, hearing none. Steve Enlund will present the consent agenda for approval.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. This is item two B, Human Resources Committee. Earlier this evening, the Human Resources Committee approved of four resignations, seventeen retirements, three leave of absences, and forty-four new contracts. The information was provided in your packet, and an addendum was placed on your desk. Madam President, I move that the consent agenda be approved as amended.
Any second? That's by Mr. Baumgart. Okay. Any discussion? Ms. Tacoma?
Yeah, just a, a quick observation. You may have all noticed this, but I wanted to share this with you. Each of our high schools provides us with a financial report every month. And I just had noticed that, and I've looked at this, this report every month, but I had just noticed that Waukesha North had, had their assets diversified a little bit. They invest in CDs, and a couple other, they have a savings account. And the other schools haven't been quite as, maybe aggressive with, with that. But I had just noticed that, and I just thought that might have stemmed from, at one time, we had a credit union, I think Landmark Credit Union used to be in Waukesha North. And that kind of raised, I think, awareness there, and I, I just wonder if they started, you know, doing the CD type of investment back then. Too bad Jody's not here to, to ask her that, but it, just, just an observation, not, not, not to necessarily say South and But it's just an observation, not to necessarily say South and West need to go out and do that, too. But it was just a little different, they're diversifying just a little bit, so.
Mr. Joy, you should come every month because you're gonna get affirmations and accolades like no one else. Mr. Enlund. Okay. Any further discussion or comments regarding the consent agenda? Okay. Stacy, will you call the role, please?
Steve Enlund?
Aye.
Karen Reinacek?
Aye.
Joe Como?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Patricia Madden?
Aye.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Ellen Langill?
Aye.
Barbara Brzink?
Aye. Motion pass eight zero. Now you get your turn.
Okay. First of all, some good news. Our Health Sciences Academy has been chosen for the state Project Lead the Way Convention at the State Capitol on March 14th. And we'll be sending some students, as well as some staff and so on, to that event. So that is a nice honor. We're being recognized for STEM education. And again, you know, the principal of the Health Sciences Academy is here this evening, so. He planned well. Good news there. Speaking of charter schools, I am gonna work with Mr. Baumgart to take a look at all our contracts and some of the potential legislation that came about recently. I think it'd be very, very prudent to take a look at those, make sure, number one, that they are complying with state law. But if, you know, if we think that it makes sense to extend those, I think at this time, it's a good idea. We know that all our charter schools are doing a really wonderful job and there'd be no reason to, you know, want those contracts expire anyway. So I think it might be prudent to take a look at those, make sure they're in line. And if we have an opportunity to extend some of those, to protect them from some future legislation, we should do that. Magnet schools are not an issue, and that is an option in some cases, except for E-Achieve. The only way E-Achieve can operate under state law is as a charter school. So that's the biggest. E-Achieve and the STEM contracts will be the first that I think we have to look at because those are coming due shortly. I sent some information to you in the last Packet on changing some daily schedules. Again, I would like to see a little bit later start at the high school. I think, number one, that's going to improve the attendance. If academic option stays the first thing in the morning, I think it's gonna improve some attendance. I know there are some issues with the 7:20 start. Even though we're only looking at 20 minutes, it does make a difference. It certainly makes a difference on bus pickup times for those middle school kids who, I know a number of my middle school neighbors are out at the bus at 6:45 a.m. in the dark in the minus 20 degree weather. So 20 minutes is not a huge difference, but I think it does help somewhat. It also could add 15 minutes to our elementary day. And I think we need to start looking at our elementary instructional time versus what we're seeing in the county. And we need to remain competitive. We are low, we are very low in that regard. And I think we have to find a way to kind of bump those up a little bit. So that would be my first approach. Obviously, there's a lot of things to work out, there's busing, there's some other contractual issues that I'm working through with Lori, Chris, Ryan, and so on. And hopefully, we'll have a proposal for the next CNI committee meeting. Make-up days, again, remind everyone, those are March 6th and 7th and May 23rd. Originally, our backup days were March 6th, March 23rd, and April 4th. I did not want to burn April 4th at this time because it feels like the ice age is creeping up on us. And I, we could have some additional nasty weather yet. And I think we don't want to be in a position where we're delaying graduation or other events. So we went this way again. Parents who've had trips planned on either of those two days, we will work with them. If they need to be excused, we'll find a way to make that work for them. We certainly don't want to penalize anyone for that regard. But it is, it's a very, very unusual winter. Under any other conditions, I would say we'll use April 4th. But I just, this early in the year, having missing four days is a real issue. So we'll keep you posted on that. Tonight, you'll be looking at some FMLA policy. And at your desk, you have a sheet that has some yellow highlighting in it. And I just wanted to let you know, give you a heads up on that. The blue, the writing in the blue is what's required by law. And the district has no discretion on that particular language. The language in the yellow, we do have some discretion on. And either Chris Edstrom or myself can answer any questions on that. But we did go through that very thoroughly in the Policy Committee meeting. And the Policy Committee recommended no changes. But, so as you're looking, all this language, realize that while you don't have to skip the blue, understand that we don't have a lot of discretion in changing those. Another issue that came to light this week, senior passes for athletic events and other events. We are the only district in the conference that charges senior citizens to get into two events. We, our own citizens can get a senior pass, all they have to do is show an ID that shows they live in the school district, and they can get a free pass to all these events. However, seniors that come from other districts, it is an issue because we are the only ones who charge. And again, you've got some folks who are taking tickets, who are making $20 for about three hours' work, taking a tremendous amount of heat. So that is something we're gonna look at at the very near future. I would like to be consistent with the other schools in the conference. We're not talking about much money at all here. And I think it's a nice gesture that we're consistent with the other schools. And one last issue. The Co-op Health Center, Chris Edstrom continues to work with the county and the city on that. There are some meetings on February 20th at 2:30 p.m. and 6:00 p.m. And Chris can give you some more information on that. The consultant will be coming in and presenting to the county and the city their findings. And we're invited to, either of those or both of them, if we would like to attend. And certainly, any board member would be welcome to attend those as well. And then Chris has planned a February 25th Board Workshop Session to continue that discussion. But from what we're seeing, it looks like things are looking as expected or turning out to be as we expected. And that's my report.
Thank you. I'd like to thank you for your flexibility in the make-up days. Because I'm sure some parents have planned some trips and would really like to continue with their plans. So thank you for your flexibility.
And the other issue on that is, you know, to have a quarter with 30-some days and another one with almost 50 days is not, is not. I mean, most of our courses are semester, but we do have some middle school programs and other things that run by quarter. And that's a problem if we start overloading one and we're low on days in the other ones.
And then also, as a senior citizen, I'd like to thank you for your consideration. To senior citizens that come to our events, I know my husband and I go to Arrowhead and we go to Homestead, et cetera. We never get charged, so we should extend that to all senior citizens.
Yeah, the age of the Classic Eight uses a 62 for free admission, and that's what I'm gonna be recommending as well.
So perhaps we can make sure that the ticket takers or whatever know this so that these people aren't stopped.
Correct, now, I did not check, I don't know if it's policy or if it's simply an annual resolution that the board passes. And we'll check on that. And there's only a few games left, and I might ask for some administrative discretion on that for the remainder of the year. And I know our AEDs would certainly appreciate it, and especially the people who take the tickets who have to put up with some of the angry people who, again, the only district that they have to pay in. Again, I don't think we're looking at very much in terms of revenue. But it would be some very good PR, I think, to be consistent with the other.
I'd like to ask Ms. Madden a question as Chairperson of the Policy Committee. I think we discussed this last year, and I think it's in policy, so.
The pass is in policy, but not the admission rates.
Okay, no.
I don't recall any admission rates. Now, I do recall having fees looked at by the FNF Committee, but I don't recall if that particular fee was voted on. Lori might be able to remind me. But if there's some discretion there, I'd like to use it for the rest of the year. Again, we're only talking probably four or five more games, home games between all three high schools.
Thank you, thank you very much. I know for sure one of our citizens is gonna be.
And had I not, had he not called, I would not have known.
Right.
So I'm glad people call and let me know when there are issues, so.
Thank you very much, I'm glad he followed through. All right, now we're gonna get into our committee reports. And the first committee report this evening will be presented by Patrick McCaffrey, Technology Committee.
Thank you, Mrs. Brzink. The Technology Committee of the Waukesha Board of Education met on January 28th. There was one action item, two information items, and one discussion item. And for those of you who follow the Technology Committee religiously, may notice that on the Board Agenda, there was not an action item. That's because in technology, a lot of our action items carry a price tag. So when we vote on an action item, it actually gets forwarded to FNF for action. And then it's presented to the Board through the FNF Agenda. So I just wanted to waylay any questions about that. The action item that we had for the committee was related to the new phone system, which I reported on my last report. The committee and the Tech Department decided on the on-premises hosted system, which will give us a large degree of scalability. And it will also integrate into our information and security systems, which we have upgraded over the course of the last couple of years. The vote on that action item was 3-0, and it was forwarded to FNF for further discussion and approval. The information items were our normal update on the Waukesha One. The Waukesha One is progressing on schedule. The Wave Two rollout is currently underway. The Butler rollout is scheduled for February 3rd through 6th, so that has already happened. Central is scheduled for February 17th through 20th. And Saratoga is scheduled for the last week of February. Hawthorne is scheduled for March. Now, those dates, the dates moving forward are movable in case we need to reschedule. Wave Three rollout is scheduled for the fall of 2014, and staff training is already underway. Wave Four and Five schools have all submitted their proposals to the Tech Department, and those are under review. Our second information item was the rollover of our SIS or Student Information System from Zangle to Infinite Campus. The IT staff and coach training has been completed on the new system. The first conversion upload has occurred, and the first stage of data movement will be commencing on February 14th. The second stage of the system, which includes the scheduling system, will be available by April 11th. And the final cutover is still planned for July 1st, 2014. The Tech Department is also looking into further integration with our POS or Point of Sale system for our food service. So we may get some efficiencies there as well with the new system. Our discussion item centered around Board of Education broadcast of meetings. There was a lot of interest in that from people on the committee and people on the Board. Currently, our meetings are broadcast on Channel 13, which everybody knows. And we are deficient in a broadcast signal with U-verse.
Yep.
We could broadcast to U-verse, we would need to upgrade some of our equipment. There is a cost involved in that, but it is minimal, it's about $3,000. The problem with U-verse is even if we upgraded the equipment and started to broadcast, they would not give us an actual channel. We wouldn't have a channel. You wouldn't go to Channel 513 and see her.
What would you do?
It would be a menu item, which would, you would get through your remote control, and then you would have to actually go through all the menu items. It's more of an on-demand feature. So that could be more confusing than actually, you know, having it on U-verse. So they're still looking at it, but it doesn't seem like a starter, it seems like a non-starter. The Tech Committee and the Tech Department are looking at better ways to get the information out there. Currently, we livestream the meetings through a company called Ustream. And we also archive meetings, meeting footage on that service as well. However, Ustream is beginning to restrict our data storage. So the archive will become smaller and smaller, and less and less time will be involved. And they are also gonna raise our rates for the livestreaming. So the Tech Department is actually looking at utilizing YouTube for the livestreaming, on-demand, and archival footage. We would actually have, the Board of Education would have their own channel where you would be able to get to it. There would be a link on the site, currently, the full board meetings are streamed live on the site, on our website. And that would continue. But we would actually have a YouTube channel where we could actually archive meetings with incredibly large storage space. So we could have meetings from a year ago on there, which would not be available on our Ustream account. And if there aren't any questions, that concludes my report.
Thank you.
Yes.
I do have a question. So in other words, only those that have Time Warner can get Channel 13?
Um, yeah, because Time Warner is our provider.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's provided by their government, I mean, they have a, I don't want to say a monopoly, but they have rights, certain rights in the city, and that's a contract with the city, which AT&amp;T does not have.
Does not, that's too bad.
And you have to have the digital box or digital signal to receive Channel 13 with Time Warner. You can't have an analog signal anymore.
No, no. We had the digital box, we went and.
You sprang.
Did you pick it up?
I do not, no.
I'll get it for you.
I get it on the website because I got the iPad.
You can get it on streaming, though.
Yeah.
I am aware that a recent former board member does continue to watch.
He does, from the sunny wild of Florida.
That's right, you're absolutely right.
Yeah.
Okay, Karen?
Thank you. So Pat, what do you mean about YouTube would give us their own, our own channel? Would that be on a computer or how does that work?
They would be on their servers, yeah. For instance, when you have your own channel, you can just type in Waukesha Board of Education, they will actually, it's like an account.
On your computer?
Yeah, you go to YouTube.
So for those people at home that don't have a computer, they wouldn't be able to see it?
No. Well, actually, though, you know, Channel 13, you don't really need a computer, because Channel 13 is broadcast over the airwaves. So if you just have a. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I know, I'm just trying to.
Yeah, we're just looking at different ways to get it out there because, I mean, U-verse probably just isn't gonna happen. I mean, it took Steve Schulman forever to find it where it would be located.
So if someone did not have a computer at home, they could either come here and see it live?
Yep.
Or go to the library?
Go to the library.
Download the YouTube channel and watch it from there?
Or if they have an antenna for their TV, they could. Channel 13 is airwave.
But would it still do that if we went to YouTube?
Yes, oh, yeah, we would still broadcast on Channel 13 on Time Warner and over air.
But I thought that, and is that through Ustream or no?
No, Ustream is how we livestream the footage and archive it right now.
Okay, I thought it was all going to be on the computer.
No.
Okay, got it.
No, of course not.
Dr. Langill?
Yeah. I'm not, no, I'm not, sorry. I think that we don't know what I would think is sort of a crucial thing. I assume, and I know you feel this way too, Pat, but that getting our meetings out, getting the information out, you know, is really important. And I don't know for sure, but my guess is that a lot of the people who do watch, at least the ones that sort of collar me and talk about it, are, I would say, maybe older.
Yes.
Is that fair?
Yep.
Yes.
And I also would like to know if the city knows, or Steve, what percentage right now in the city of people that have U-verse versus Time Warner? I suspect it's increasingly U-verse, I mean, from everything I read in here. If that's the case, then I think it behooves us still to not shut that option off. Even if it means we have to do a little more communicating to people. Because a lot of the seniors aren't gonna come here. They may or may not go to the library, they're probably not gonna get on YouTube.
Right.
I mean, that's my guess.
You're right.
The ones that have talked to me. And if communicating, because these are the people who vote, you know, these are the people who, I mean, are pretty intent very often on what's going on in the community, which is all good. So I think that it behooves us to find out if there are ways that we can better reach them.
Okay.
If that's okay.
Yeah, no, definitely, agreed.
Thank you.
Mr. Baumgart?
And it would be appropriate for those same people to start leaning on U-verse?
Absolutely. Yep. Yep, absolutely.
I agree, Dr. Langill, I just think it's, now, I think, since. I agree, Dr. Langill. I just think it's, now I think, since this changeover with Time Warner, you know, I think a lot of people lost, you know, the ability to connect to our school board meetings, and I agree. It's very important, and the more communication we can have with the public, the better it is. They support our school district, and they ought to know what's going on. So, thank you. Anything else, Mr. McCaffrey?
Nope. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Yes.
One more comment on that.
Sure.
Just, I just wanted to echo what Patrick had said in terms of what U-verse has offered us now. It's really horrible. I mean, it's really poor from two perspectives. He mentioned, he mentioned the one perspective of it's really hard to find it, but then the way things get encoded is, are very grainy, and the quality is very poor. And I forgot the technical reason for that, but, and I think even with the new encoder, we would still have that issue. So, the quality, even if we could get them to put us on a channel, we still may have a quality issue. So, there were a couple of things that Steve was trying to work with on there, so.
Okay, thank you.
We will investigate further, however.
Thank you. We'll continue to investigate that. All right, our next report is Finance and Facilities Committee, presented by Joe Como.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. Tonight, we have two action items and two information items. The first action item is approval of the 2014-2015 CISA Service Contract for Carl Perkins Grant. CISA One has been authorized by the State of Wisconsin to provide educational services to area school districts on a cooperative basis. The Carl Perkins Career and Technology Consortium is a group of 17 districts that have contracted with CISA One to act as a fiscal agent to provide staff development opportunities and collaboration with the other districts in accordance with the requirements prescribed by the district's entitlement funds through a Carl Perkins Grant. The program has been in place for over 20 years. Our current contract for this program expires at the end of the school year. The program is funded wholly by the Carl Perkins Funds, and the committee approved the contract naming CISA One Fiscal Agent of the Carl Perkins Career and Technology Education Consortium for the periods July 1st through 20, July 1st, 2014 through June 30th, 2019, and I so move.
Is there a second, please?
Second.
Second by Mr. McCaffrey. Questions, comments?
Just.
I have a question, please.
Go ahead.
Who was Carl Perkins? I mean, I've heard his name over the years.
Well, he was founder of Perkins Elmer, Elmer Perkins. It was a huge company, electronics, I believe. I don't know if our historian knows that. I believe that's the same Perkins.
Yeah, okay.
No, no, no.
Many, many.
Yes, I know. It's a long time ago, yes. But we talked about it, and, you know, I just thought I'd ask.
He was an industrialist, I know that, but I don't have a lot of background, and I believe he had provided some funding, which became, Perkins is actually a federal.
Oh, it is. Okay. So, Mr. Como, this money isn't divided equally among 17 school districts. You have to apply for it based on an activity or event that you're planning.
Yeah, we're receiving $90,000. I don't know what the other school districts are, but Lori had reported out $90,000. Is that correct?
That was, oh, very good, very good.
It seems to me the other districts, and that was a similar amount.
Yeah, all right. Thank you, Mr. Como. All right, it's been moved and seconded that we accept the approval of the 2014-15 CISA Service Contract for Carl Perkins Grant. Stacy, would you call the roll, please?
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Steve Edlund?
Aye.
Ellen Langill?
Aye.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Patricia Madden?
Aye.
Joseph Como?
Aye.
Karen Reinacek?
Aye.
Barbara Brzing?
Aye.
Mrs. Brzing?
Yes.
Carl Perkins was United States House Representative, member from the state of Kentucky.
Oh, well, how nice. You used your.
Was he also a scientist?
He was a lawyer.
Ah, did he ever own a company that did electronics? I was just wrong then, eh?
You were a little bit off, but.
Okay.
Maybe he made pancakes on this.
Maybe he was an attorney for a while.
So, the information you pull up said he was from Kentucky?
Yeah.
And then is this?
Named after Carl Dewey Perkins.
He must have introduced the bill.
Died in 1984.
So, do districts in every state get some of the money, or is it just, I mean, I can't believe it's just Wisconsin if he was from Kentucky?
No, it's a federal grant.
It's a federal grant, and it's geared towards, a lot of it is geared towards technology education.
Great. Well, Mr. McCaffrey, thank you very much.
Very quick.
Your iPad there so well. Okay, Mr. Como?
Well, I misspoke. I misspoke twice. I said I had two action items. I only had one. So, I'm going to roll right into my information items.
Stay after school for that one.
That's right, that's right. The first information item is the monthly budget report. The committee received the monthly budget report for activity through January 2014. $39,919,569 was reported in the general revenue, and $11,905,737 was expended during the month. $1,742,473 was reported in special education revenue, and $2,358,444 was expended. The district paid off its short-term borrowing last month and is operating in accordance with our budget projections. So, that's another month of good news.
Mr. Como, do you?
We have a correction. Your script is wrong, but the agenda is correct, and we have, we do have a resolution.
Resolution. I gave it a.
I'm sorry, it must be missing on your script, but it is correctly noted on the agenda correction.
I was told it was going to be under HR, but that's okay.
Do you have it?
I do.
All right.
I do. How about if I finish my second information item, and then we'll go back to that? Second information item is a recommendation to District Representative on the Joint Review Board regarding Brookfield Tax Incremental District Number One. Tax incremental districts allow a municipality to capture the taxes generated by new or increased property values within their boundaries to pay for municipality-funded improvements that attract new development and increase the tax base. Since Mr. Warren's retirement, I've been the District Representative on the Joint Review Board. The town of Brookfield Tax Incremental District Number One, often referred to as the Corners Project, has been under debate for two years. Mike Kerrigan of Ellers and Associates, Rick Zop, Town Administrator of Brookfield, and Keith Henderson, the Town Chairperson of Brookfield, were present at Monday's meeting to answer the committee's questions and to provide background information. It's anticipated that the TID will generate over $150 million in new tax base, 1,070 retail jobs, 325 construction jobs, and it's expected that sufficient tax increments will be recovered. We'll recover all costs in 20 years by 2034. The plan is scheduled for final approval by the Joint Review Board in March of 2014. So, we had a good discussion on Monday. Now, we'll go back to our action items. I do have a second action item, Mrs. Brzing. We're looking at the ratification of a master agreement between the Board of Education and the Education Association of Wachsha for the 2013-2014 fiscal year.
Wait. No, we're.
The item you want to put out is the resolution authorizing the lease purchase for the key government finance.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Do you like, it is A2 in your packet if you want to grab that?
I'll find it. I will find it. I think I will find it.
I think the language on the agenda should suffice if you want to use that.
That's okay. No, I got it. I got it. So, what you have, what we're looking at is the lease agreement for the telephone system. I just need to listen to what you're telling me, Mr. Gray. What we're looking at is essentially expanding our lease that we already have. We have a master agreement with Cisco Systems. We're looking at adding a schedule on to that master lease, and that is for the new telephone system that Mr. McCaffrey had discussed during the technology portion of the meeting. And what we're looking at tonight is to approve a resolution authorizing and ratifying the Master Tax Exempt Lease Purchase Agreement with Key Government Finance Incorporated and Related Property Schedule Number Two to finance the purchase of a phone system from Cisco Capital with a purchase price not to exceed $1,452,256, and I so move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion, questions, comments, opinions? Okay. It's been moved and seconded that we approve our resolution authorizing, approving, and ratifying the Master Tax Exempt Lease Purchase Agreement with Key Government Finance and Related Property Schedule.
That's.
Okay, Stacy, would you call the roll, please?
Ellen Langill?
Aye.
Patricia Madden?
Aye.
Joseph Como?
Aye.
Karen Reinacek?
Aye.
Steve Edlund?
Aye.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Barbara Brzing?
Aye. Motion passes eight zero.
Well, and that concludes my report, and I'm sorry to make this so confusing. I guess I just want to make motions on all sorts of things.
You're a man of action.
That's right.
So, that concludes your report. Okay, and that concludes Mr. Como's report. Curriculum Instruction Committee, and I'd ask Dr. Langill to present for me this evening. Dr. Langill?
Thank you, Mrs. Brzing. She wears so many hats that I agreed to give the CNI report, so let me do so. So, the last CNI committee meeting was a week ago, last night on the 4th, and we do have some action items, but before we do, we want to thank the math teacher leaders that came to our meeting and shared their journey and the knowledge they have gained. They're really an outstanding group, and we had a good turnout of all of them. They finished their last course in December, and they're the first group of participants in Carroll University's Elementary Math Certificate Program, and they reported to us how much it meant to them and what they had gained, and so it was a great presentation, and we're very excited about all of it. So, turning to the action items, and forgive me, but I'll do my best to explain this first one, because we waded through it, and then we waded back through it. It's called Approval of Principles of Engineering for Science Equivalency. It's a new course. Our CTE Coordinator, Amy Lang, along with Emily McHugh, Science and Nate Schmidt Technology Teacher at Wachsha South High School, requested that our committee approve this Principles of Engineering for Science Equivalency. And the course is called Principle of Engineering and Would Be for Science Equivalency. This recommendation is made based on the amount of physics that students learn in that Principles of Engineering course and how the course mirrors what is taught in our physics courses. State standards from both departments were used to complete a crosswalk. It says identifying that all physics standards are met within the Principles of Engineering curriculum. Additionally, the Department of Public Instruction, University of Wisconsin, system have allowed this since 2008, and universities will accept Principles of Engineering as an equivalent or a requirement of science. Our committee voted five to zero, CNI, to approve this course for students in our engineering academy, so that it can count in that. And the reason, and I hope that I'm not going to confuse people more than if I didn't say anything, then we deferred consideration of allowing that same course at North and West High Schools. And for non-academy students at South, we deferred discussion and consideration action on whether their Principles of Engineering course should act in those instances, those three, also as an equivalency for a science elective. Right now, it would not count as one of their three science credits required for graduation. So, we're going to sort of take it one place at a time. The original action item was to do both, to do all of it, and we decided to sort of step back and consider part two a little bit later as we go. I don't know if that makes sense, but I'll take maybe questions.
I will.
Ryan and Bill and Joe, everybody who was there, we can all try to clarify this.
Yeah, that's not exactly, mostly correct, but not exactly.
Okay.
Mostly. What we do want to proceed with allowing the Principles of Engineering course to be a science equivalency course at North, West, and the non-academic, excuse me, the non-academy students at South. It would be a science equivalency course, but it would not be a science credit course. So, it would be taken as an academic.
Comes towards graduation.
It would be taken as an academic elective.
Right.
Not a credit.
I actually dug into this a little bit more with Amy and Jason yesterday. They get some points.
They say you don't get credit.
It's not a requirement, correct?
It's not a requirement, no. Let me read, let me read a pro and con thing here on the first part, which deals with North, West, and the non-academy students. By passing this motion, non-academy students will get science equivalency credit for Principles of Engineering. It will show on their transcript as a technology and engineering course, but with science equivalency. This allows them an academic elective to count for admission into college. So, it is to the colleges, particularly those in Wisconsin, who have indicated that Principles of Engineering is a good course to be counted. They will count this course in Wisconsin at our state schools. If it does not pass, these students would end up getting no changes, and the course would be labeled only as a technology and engineering course and would not count as an academic elective for them in their college application. So, that's the pro and the con on the first part. And that's as far as you went, right? Did you get into the second part of it?
Well, like I say, we defer the whole, the science credit part, we defer.
Yeah, yeah, that's, yeah.
Right. Equivalency is fine, but not the credit.
Right. So, did you read the second part of the motion on the charter school?
I think I read the whole motion that was given to me.
Let me.
This is the motion.
The aspect of this motion that deals with the Engineering Preparatory Academy and the Principles of Engineering course is this. The motion wants, recommends that the, for the Engineering Preparatory Academy, the Principles of Engineering be put in place of the physics course. It be put in place of the physics course because the students in the academy are required to take four years of science-related courses. Three of those are the credit courses that they typically take. This would become, again, a science equivalency course and an academic elective, which would be recognized by the colleges. At the same time, because we would not, they would not have to take the regular physics course, they would be able to take, then in place of the regular physics course, they would be able to take an applied, excuse me, advanced course, like an advanced AP course, AP Physics, or something else, if they're interested in biology or chemistry. So, for the WEPA students, on their transcript, they would have three science courses, credit courses, plus the Principles of Engineering equivalency, science equivalency course. It allows them the flexibility of taking additional courses. As I mentioned, frees up a spot where physics used to be. If it does not pass, the WEPA students will still have to take regular physics to their schedule and would have lost the flexibility to take the AP courses. And then we have the third part of the motion, which was that the committee will continue to look in the future at.
Yeah, but that wasn't a motion. That's just additional information.
That was actually a friendly amendment to the motion.
Okay.
Right? I made it.
Yeah, it just isn't listed here. No, I did make it, but it wasn't listed here as a amendment, and I didn't want to confuse people more than we already.
And Ellen is so accurate. This is extremely confusing.
Yeah.
Pardon?
How could you have a motion with three different subjects in it?
We haven't had a motion yet.
We had, at the meeting on Tuesday, we had three different pieces.
Okay.
However, to your point, the third part of the motion, and really the first two go together, but the third part was a kind of a. together, but the third part was a kind of a committee procedural motion from me, which doesn't come up as an action item tonight. And so that's why it really isn't in front of you as an action.
Okay.
Okay, that makes sense.
That makes sense? And Ellen is absolutely correct, this became an extremely confusing subject.
Yes.
Because of the, how do I say this tactfully? The board needs to understand some of the terminology that is used in academia, like a science course versus a science equivalency course. That's two different things. Courses, I found out subsequently in talking to Amy, courses are coded by the state as to whether they are science courses or technology and engineering courses. This course is coded as a 2100 something or another, which is a technology and engineering course, taught by technology and engineering certified teachers. And as a matter of fact, at this point in time, we do not have, and by the way, these teachers have to be certified through MSOE because this is, they own somehow or another this Project Lead the Way concept. So all of this goes through eighteen different, you know, ways of being defined, I guess you could say. But we do not turn, we would be teaching this course as a technology and education course by teachers that are certified to teach it, and it's a coded course by the state. We are the ones that can apply the science equivalency core transcript, not notation that it is a science equivalency course, which the state does buy.
Okay.
Now I probably have really made a mess out of things.
Are we clear?
So what is the motion? What is the motion?
Okay, the motion is to approve the CNI committee's recommendation, which was five to zero, to allow this Principles of Engineering to be a science equivalency within our engineering academy, basically. And then the support was just that state standards approve that and so forth. So that's essentially what the motion was.
Okay, so second?
I have to ask a question first, please.
Okay.
The motion that we had on Wednesday also included that we would be using the Principles of Engineering course taught at North and West and the non-academy students at South to be able to get science equivalency for this.
Did you want to do that all in one, or did you want to do it in two?
Did you want to make it two?
Well, I don't know, the board can tell me. I mean, it's confusing enough as it is. Do you want us to do that as a separate?
Yeah, because Tony doesn't like that part of it.
Okay.
Yeah, separate piece.
Then what you've read so far, I will second.
Okay.
Okay. Any questions or further comments, opinions? Okay, Stacy, take the roll on that one.
Karen Reinacek?
Aye.
Ellen Langel?
Aye.
Patricia Madden?
Aye.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Joe Como?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Steve Edlund?
Aye.
Barbara Brzink?
Aye.
Okay, now let's have the second motion.
Okay, so the second motion coming out also five to zero was that students at North and West and the non-academy students at South who take this Principles of Engineering course, which they're, you know, it's possible for them to do, can earn a science equivalency, or it will qualify as a science equivalency, but not, and a, science equivalency in an elective, but not as a science credit. So that was the second part of our motion, second motion.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded that, any further comments, opinions?
Just a quick comment. One of the things that we'll look at as a committee is to see if this course, I'm forgetting the name, I'm sorry, Principles of Engineering, could potentially become a science credit at the other high schools. And that's one thing we're going to explore. One of the other things that I'd like to perhaps take a look at too, while we're taking a peek at that, is is it time to maybe consider having four sciences be required for graduation? Don't know. Might want to combine those topics together as we explore that a little bit.
And I think that's partly why we delayed this other part of the discussion, because this is sort of a physics substitute, and the question we also had is, how's that going to work? So we didn't want to rush into that part.
And, you know, if it's good enough to count as a science credit in the academy, why isn't it good enough to count as a science credit in our traditional high schools? So...
It really won't be a science credit in the academy, it'll be a science equivalency in the academy.
But it will count towards graduation, is my understanding.
By our definitions, we require four science...
Right, in the academy.
Courses, it's different. This is where the state definition and our definitions are not...
I'm saying within our district.
Yeah, we can play that.
If it's good enough for the academy to count as a science credit, why wouldn't we count it as a science credit, equivalency or science equivalency? Just want to, just want to take a look, a closer look at that. And while we're looking at that, perhaps, maybe we want to look at our graduation requirements also. How many science courses do we, do we want to have towards graduation? Right now, it's three in the traditional schools, and it's four science credits for graduation in the academy.
And I just want to add the same comment I made at CNI, is that I think anytime we have a situation where we can create a greater depth in a particular, especially a course subject area is very good. You know, some of the criticisms of American high schools, we have a too much breadth and not in its depth. This adds depth to a course subject area, and I think this is, you know, although it needs some further review, as Mr. Como stated, I think it's a good step in the right direction.
Mr. Cronin, then Mr. Edlund.
Just one other piece to add, another layer to the future discussions, is that at the academies, they have been in conversation all year about the course requirements and how they're somewhat different there, and how access to additional AP courses and other things are sometimes possibly limited because of some of the other requirements. And this was an area as well, they looked at not only adding depth, as Todd Gray just mentioned, but also creating additional options and looking at where courses may overlap or fit an academy experience. So again, addressing this on a large scale, I think will be a good next step. And I think it really started at the academy conversation of wanting students to have access to the full breadth of AP courses at their high school, which a lot of universities are looking for students to be able to demonstrate in their transcripts as well.
Thank you. Mr. Edlund?
I'm going to direct this question probably to Ryan. I understand this course being content-specific to WEPA, but what's the relevancy to the other high schools? Do they have engineering programs? Do they have the staff to be able to teach a new program such as this, a new course such as this? Are they geared up for it?
The Project Lead the Way course, Principles of Engineering, is taught at our other high schools, and that, I think they would have staff that if we had that conversation and looked for some of that course alignment, that it would be possible. Those conversations just haven't taken place yet because it really started with the academy conversation first and looking at what the different requirements were for the students at the academies at South. And that's where, at the CNI committee, some of the conversation was. At this time, there was confidence in the alignment and the team teaching and the academy experience, but we did need further discussion on next steps, if this were to be beyond that or outside of it. So it's almost looking at it as a specific charter school experience for those in the academies, but it would be possible. And I think those are some of the next conversations that we have to have, is then, what would that look like? But right now, the academy teachers and the physics teachers and the teams have teamed to design this, and so moving forward too fast, it would have, it needs a little more time.
Sure. And I understand that you have to crawl before you walk concept, and I think it's a good approach, rather than just immerse in everybody at one time and letting them try to flounder through how they're going to be able to deliver the content. I, I'm a little concerned when we start to add more and more courses such as this that were, that our course offerings are going to be so great that we're going to have less student participation per course. So are we eliminating something to make sure that we have enough students in the classroom?
Well, it's a good question, and I think that's also why we wanted to go slower, because for our academy students, this could lead them then to an AP course in physics, although it is, in a sense, its own course in physics. But we didn't want to jump in, as you say, to the deep water and do that for everyone, because we want to evaluate how this fits into the whole scope and sequence in terms of science. So that's why we're kind of delaying that a little bit. That helps.
Mr. Baumgart?
But it is, it is currently taught at all of our high schools. But it is taught as an elective. It is not, it is not used in any kind of a replacement mode at all. It's only for those, again, I'm outside of the academy now. It's an elective that they may take, and it will continue that way. The students at North, West, and the traditional South will continue to take biology, chemistry, and physics. We are not replacing them.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Do we have it, Mr. Joy?
That's why he's here.
Okay. Are you ready for the, ready for the, ready for the vote? Okay, Stacy, take roll call, please.
Patricia Madden?
Aye.
Joseph Como?
Aye.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Steve Edlund?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Karen Reinacek?
Aye.
Ellen Langel?
Aye.
Barbara Brzink?
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero. Thank you, Stacy.
Okay.
Thank you, Bill, for helping out.
Yes, I was going to thank Bill for being such a good wingman there. So hopefully, this is a little clearer. It will be, and we'll keep working through this. Okay, the second action item is new course approval, and this one isn't, I mean, it's a great course, it's just not nearly as complex in its situation. It comes from the Waukesha Health Academy course, and it's really the third now in a sequence. We have two years now implemented under Project Lead the Way in biomedical sciences, and this would be a third course. It's called Medical Interventions. You have a copy of the outline of the course. It really sounds exciting. I mean, it's really a great course. And so we looked at it, talked to them about it, asked questions, and on a vote of five to zero, CNI voted to approve this as a third sequence in the biomedical sciences program, and I move that we adopt it.
Seconded.
Seconded, Mr. Baumgart. Questions, comments?
I think we were so tired about the other one that we didn't...
Yeah, it was just, it was a given.
This has been in the works because this is a sequential series that we are rolling out, and we kind of agreed to, as you remember, a couple of years ago.
Right. Okay, so it's been moved and seconded that we approve the third sequence of the Project Lead the Way in the biomedical sciences program, Medical Interventions. Stacy, take roll, please.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Ellen Langel?
Aye.
Karen Reinacek?
Aye.
Steve Edlund?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Patricia Madden?
Aye.
Joseph Como?
Aye.
Barbara Brzink?
Aye.
Did you have a question, Ms. Reinacek?
I do. Why do we have bi-ed class that is required for the Health Academy but not the Engineering Academy?
It's in their contract, it would be in their, how their contract was designed when the board approved it. So the charter law allows different curriculums, you don't have to necessarily follow the state requirements. So it would have depended on how that contract was originally written. Good question.
Okay, moving on. Ellen?
Well, Madam Chair, I believe that completes our report, your report, and my report.
Thank you. Okay, moving forward, our next report is Human Resources Committee, presented by Steve Edlund.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. We have one action item this evening. It's the ratification of the master agreement between the Board of Education and the Education Association of Waukesha for the 2013-2014 fiscal year. And the script, I believe, is in the hands of Mr. Como.
Yes, the rat, it's okay, Madam Chair? Okay. The ratification of master agreement between the Board of Education and the Education Association for the 2013-2014 fiscal year. The approval of the 2013-2014 agreement between the EAW and the Board of Education provides base wage increase as negotiated. This voluntary settlement was reached on January 16th, 2014. A copy of the agreement was provided in your packets. Madam President, I move to approve the ratification of the master agreement between the Board of Education and the Education Association of Waukesha for the 2013-2014 fiscal year as presented.
Okay, any questions, comments?
I'll second that.
Okay, a second, okay. Okay, it's been, I moved in second that we accept the ratification of the master agreement between the Board of Education and the Education Association of Waukesha for the 2013-2014 fiscal year. Stacy, call the roll, please.
Joseph Como?
Aye.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Karen Reinacek?
Aye.
Ellen Langel?
Aye.
Steve Edlund?
Aye.
Patricia Madden?
Aye.
Barbara Brzink?
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
And we have, even though the agenda says that there are no information items, we did have something in the discussion portion of the HR meeting earlier this evening. The committee received an update on the status of the employee health clinic, and Chris Hedstrom will send a memo explaining what was discussed, and a work session has already been scheduled on this topic. The work session will be held on Tuesday, February 25th, at 6:00 PM in room 109. Topics for discussion at the work session will include a descriptive, a description of the process used in choosing a clinic provider, information regarding the financial costs and benefits, and discussion regarding the intergovernmental agreement between the county, city, and school district. We want to ensure we cover questions, the board may have at the end of February 25th meeting. Please contact Chris Hedstrom regarding specific issues that she would like addressed. Board members are also welcome to attend similar informational meetings that will be held on the county and city offices on Thursday, February 20th. Chris has the time for those meetings. The county meeting is during the day, I believe it's at 2:30. And the city, I don't know what time the city meets.
Six, 6:00 PM.
6:00 PM. And I would encourage board members, if you can make either one of those meetings, to attend, because you're going to, you might get a different set of questions that would come up that then might come up at our meeting, because obviously, they have a different representation in this intergovernmental, proposed intergovernmental relationship. Next steps in the process following the work session include action items at the March 10th FNF Committee meeting, following action at the March 12th Board meeting to consider approval of the intergovernmental agreement among the county, city, and school district, as well as the contract with the clinic management company. But I do have one question that I'm going to throw Chris's way on this, is I believe this would have to come before HR, before it comes to the board as a committee recommendation, would it not?
Okay. If it's going through the FNF Committee for the financial...
For the financing part of it.
Then do you also want it to go through HR Committee?
I think it's two separate discussions that probably should be held. I mean, the financing part is the FNF Committee, but the overall program, I think it would have to come before a committee to come before the board.
What we've done in the past, now this is a number of years ago, is have some joint committee meetings, when back at the time, we were looking at doing our STEM schools because there was CNI involved in it and FNF. We simply just did a joint committee meeting. So that may be another way to save some time on that.
How would the voting on that take place?
I don't recall what, I don't know if it was, it might have been the FNF Committee that had invited CNI. I don't recall, I'll have to go back and look at the notes on that, but...
Well, if you could maybe check with the county and check with the city and see what their process is going to be for approval, and be consistent across the board with all three organizations.
We can do that.
I'm just asking, I'm sorry. Why would we have to be consistent with them?
Well, I don't know why we'd want to be different than them.
Well, we have our own processes, so I think we just look at it in our own way. I mean, I would argue, I don't know.
Yeah.
My understanding, Steve, is that the county will be considering the intergovernmental agreement, but the idea of the clinic is, there's already been a resolution on that back when there was the feasibility study done, so the county does not have to approve it. The city council does have to approve both, just like our school board does. So I will check on the process that the city is using.
Okay.
Okay. Yes, I'm sorry. Ms. Men?
If you end up with that procedure, Human Resources will have to meet early, because finance can't approve the funding before they approve the project.
Makes sense.
Make sure, otherwise it can't come to March Board meeting.
Right, you're right.
Just so you.
I'm wondering if, if I might, I'm wondering if it might make sense to possibly have a resolution or something ready to consider at the February 25th meeting in terms of the item.
Yeah.
That's a good way to do it.
I think so.
And then go to FNF?
You could, you could agendize that, and if you then wanted to vote, you could. If you didn't, you would just table the, table the resolution.
But we wouldn't have any financial information to base it off of at that point, though.
You should, you should have.
We'll give finances at night.
The, the, the February 20th meeting, is my understanding, is there will be some financial information shared there, and I think Chris had mentioned that there would be all the financial information that we need by the 25th meeting. So if that's.
For, for us.
For us. Right, correct, is that correct?
I'm not talking about the overall program.
No, 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 for the impact on the school district.
Okay.
The, the item that will probably not be finalized by February 25th would be the intergovernmental agreement, but we'll be working on that over the next week as well. I mean, that's, it's already in process.
That's the 6603 agreement that we would have to do to, to combine forces with the city and county.
Does that answer your question?
It kind of does. I, I, you know, I kind of feel like we're sidestepping HR on the issue, though. You know, I mean, why have a committee if you don't? Something like this is something that, you know, almost would want to get a stamp from the committee before it gets sent on to the board.
Okay.
That's just my feelings.
Yeah, that's okay.
You know?
Thank you for sharing that.
Okay. I guess, let's see, let's see. Madam President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Edlund.
Thank you.
Okay, our last committee report for the evening is policy, presented by Patricia Madden.
Madam Chair, we have discussion items tonight. One of them is revisions to policy 4240, family and medical leave, which is relatively simple, but the revisions to that policy, 4240G, guidelines for family and medical leave. The proposed revisions in this policy also clarify the language regarding state and federal family and medical leaves. The changes in blue text indicate changes required by law. Yellow highlighted text indicates changes by administration and legal counsel. Additional changes in bold on page three, recommended by the administration, will be brought forward through the policy committee for action next week. We will bring this item forward for action at the March full board meeting. So before we go on to the next one, do we have questions on the guidelines?
I mean, I, I certainly, myself or Chris, could explain the yellow highlighted ones. The blue ones, again, we can explain those, but I mean, there's not, there's not a lot of leeway to those, to the requirements, so. I think overall, the highlighted items, there are some, you know, benefit changes to, to the positive for our employees in this, while we're still maintaining, maintaining the federal and state law.
Okay.
No questions, and we have revisions to policy 4241, sick leave and fitness for duty. The proposed revisions in this policy also clarify the language regarding state and federal family and medical leaves. We will bring this item forward for action at the March full board meeting. If anybody has any questions on those before next Tuesday, when policy meets, or even after that, give either Mr. Gray a call or myself, and we'll see what we can do about that. Other, Joe?
I, I just want to know what was driving reducing those number of days down. Did you have discussion in committee on that, or?
We did have, and we're trying to get in consistency with other districts.
Oh, okay.
Private industry, et cetera.
Okay.
We had quite a bit of discussion about it, frankly, but nothing else. That completes the policy committee report, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. Ms. Madden? It doesn't look like we need to have a executive session this evening. So before we adjourn, are there any questions, comments, that anyone would like to share with us?
I just have one quick comment. I thank fellow board members and apologize for my absence from the last meeting last week. I was in, more in San Diego, where I got this cold. And, yeah, doing a speech on Harry Truman, but I really appreciate everybody and what you did in considering substit, or appointment of candidates, so, sorry I wasn't here.
Mr. Cronin has something that also that he'd like to invite everyone to.
Okay. Mr. Baumgart?
May I see just an invitation for next week on, on your desk? When you arrived tonight, we have been hosting this, with, in partnership with the Institute at CSU One, we've been hosting a number of visits to outside districts this year. They've been very successfully attended, and our attendance continues to rise at, at these events. We are hosting another series of these in February, and this one, by note, is going to be attended by Journal Sentinel reporter Alan Borsak, who does a number of features in the Sunday paper. Just wanted, not only to invite you to participate in, in any of those or any future ones, to attend. They're casual, but they are put on by, at Flight, at North, and at some STEM schools, and those visits continue to impress our visitors. So we get a number of teachers, principals, superintendents from other districts, and it, they've been, again, like I said, they've been very well attended, and I think they're pretty informational of what's happening in some of these personalized learning pieces. On a side note, we are compensated from the Institute at CSU One for hosting some of these visits, and that's a new partnership this year. As we've, that, as we've, in the past, fielded phone calls for visitors to come in and see that. We have now turned over the fielding, the phone calls, to the Institute, who organizes these events, and then we get a cut for every person that comes through the doors at the end of the year for these sites, which is very nice. Allows us to maybe release a teacher for a little bit of time to, to talk about some of those things. And in the afternoon, actually, the Institute at CSU One does professional development for our visitors, so they can really understand the depth of what's happening instructionally. So just, there's the updated February ones, and in the future, we'll just be adding some additional dates and visits if it, if you can make it in your calendar for a stop.
So it would be difficult to make all four sites?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, but they're repeated.
They're repeated, okay. All right, thank you. Any questions? Ms. Reinacek?
So if people from other districts are coming in, aren't they stealing our ideas?
Yeah.
Can't we have more business people and people that want to partner with us coming in to see our great things versus?
We, we are doing that, and, and again.
Can they come to these?
What's that?
Can they come to these?
Can they come to these? We do have business partners. Recently, we had a number of, for example, a number of well-known employees at the Flight Academy working with the students. I mean, we, we do have business partners coming in, looking at what we're doing, helping us with, with, you know, providing lots of free advice to help us in different areas. Our academies have business people on the charter boards, so we have been active, and we're continuing to be active. I, I currently am on the Waukesha County Business Alliance, and that's, that's been very, very helpful. And again, each month, I share the good things that are happening in the district.
Great.
And so we're, we're still working on that. Again, you saw the brochure for the MADE program. We have a, a nice big brochure for MADE coming out that we share with all our, our business partners and our manufacturing companies in hopes of getting, getting more co-op students and, and interns and the like out into those businesses. So we are, we are doing that. I, you recall, when Brian White was here, he said, you know, this is a well-kept secret. Well, we're not keeping it secret anymore. And if other districts want to emulate us, that's, that's, you know, that's a compliment.
One more question. When does Colonel Bryan start with us?
Tonight. He's been sworn in. His, his term of office begins this evening.
Great.
Okay, any other comments, et cetera? Mr. Edlund?
I just wanted to, for the board members that didn't know, Brian White has volunteered, along with another vice president at GE, to serve on WEPA's board of directors.
Yep.
It's been a relief for us, and we're really happy that we're getting somebody from our manufacturing community, such a well-known, historic company, in our community, involved in the process of engineering, and the outcome of the potential future employees within our community, so it's great to have. I'd like to see other companies get involved, and not just in manufacturing. I mean, we can get business leaders involved in, in mentoring programs.